Let's call the meeting to order, February 19, 2019. It shows we have three members absent, Connie, Ann, and Ed.
And Scott Simpson.
And Scott, okay.
And Ann Heltier.
We're four here. Four short, I'm sorry. Okay, let's please stand for, uh, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I guess the record should reflect that Connie Lepine is now here.
Fifty, yeah.
Yep, got it.
Thank you. If you need to go home, well, we do have a fifth one here, so we have four.
Okay, we'll see how it goes.
Okay, thank you.
We have had originally three hearings on plan tonight, but we're going-
No, we'll need to go through and approve these, approve this first.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, just on these.
Okay. First off, we've got minutes from January 7th. And let's see.
You know, listed right here, January 7th, January 14th, January 15th.
January 15th. Okay, here we go. Uh, we need to approve January 14th, January 15th, and February 13th.
No, here, let me show you here, I'm sorry. We're back at the agenda.
January 7th, 14th, and 15th.
Keep on, yeah, keep going to the front page. Sorry about that. Keep on going. Here we go. There we go. So these are the ones we need to, just these three.
Okay. January 7th, January 14th, and January 15th.
I have one update. On the January 7th draft, I put 2018, so I just updated to 2019.
I'm sorry, what was that?
On the January 7th draft minutes, I had 2018, so I'll just update that to 2019. That's the only thing I have.
Oh, okay.
And that would just be here? That'd be approved?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we approve January 7th Planning Commission work session, January 14th planning work session, and January 15th work session with the corrected dates.
Hold second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I had a couple things.
All right.
I don't remember, let's see what J this is.
Which one?
That's what I'm looking at, January 7th.
Okay.
It says on D3 that we're going, that temporary signs, no permit will be required, but it is also decided that they would be added to the next review. Does that mean our next one coming up to us? Is that what that means? On January 7th, on D3?
Oh, D13.
Yeah, right here. She's just wanting to know what this is.
Does that mean the next one coming at us?
Right here, what that means. And she's probably asking, she'll ask, there's nothing we need to respond to.
Can you, can you respond to that?
Yes.
Jake's listening.
So, it just means that we, the next draft of the code is going to incorporate those changes.
And then I had, I don't remember talking about this even. And this was on D6. It talks about we decreased the street frontage from 40 foot to 25 feet. Did we do that? I don't remember that.
I can go back and listen to the recording if you want me to.
And then accessory buildings, I don't remember talking about that at all. On 7. Did we? Did we? Okay.
That's when we first talked about the, changing the maximum size of accessory dwelling.
Yeah.
We kind of briefly went over it, and he said, "I'll come up with something and put it in the next draft."
Okay, all right. And let's see.
Any other question?
Yeah, I'm looking here. So this is on January 14th, number 3. And I remember we were going to change a word from can or something to shall, and I don't know that that made it in here. So I just wanted to say something about that.
Yeah, I hear, so. She's not sure which one.
Which, which Article 11?
4.
So under 3, like section 110?
111.
Okay.
We can, we'll just do it when we come to it through the next draft.
Yeah, if you want me to correct these, I can go back and listen to the recordings on those specific sections.
We'll just look it at the next draft, because I have it all written down.
Okay.
And then on 31, it says home adjustments. Is that supposed to be home occupations? Section 103.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I think that was all I had, sorry.
So now I think I can ask for if there's any further discussion. I mean, if not, those changes, you can ask for a vote.
Any further discussion? Any other changes?
So do you want me to verify that section under January 7th before we approve the 7th minutes?
I don't think it's, I don't, well, I don't think it's necessary. It can be approved with the understanding that we will amend that if there's, if he finds it needs to be amended.
I can make another motion.
Okay, yes. Okay.
Would you like to reword your motion?
Yeah. I can make another motion.
Make it clear, thank you.
Okay. Minutes from January 7th with corrected verbiage from Connie, minutes from January 14th with corrected verbiage from Connie, and minutes from January 15th.
Corrections?
There was no corrections in 15th.
Okay.
Yeah.
Close second.
Okay, more questions?
Okay, let's call for a vote, Dan Longfellow, say aye. Aye. Close. Okay, motion carries.
Okay, now you can go ahead. We'll have somebody make a motion to delete number 3, but you'd say that we're going to be doing 1-2, but they're going to need a motion to delete number 3 because it's being postponed.
Okay, and tonight, we're going to hear number, or a application number 1 and number 2. We will not be hearing application number 3, and I need a motion to postpone that. Someone make that motion, please.
I'll make a motion to postpone it to number 2.
Okay.
To a date to be set in the future, yeah, a date to be set in the future.
Date to be set in the future.
Okay, we have-
Well, no, we need to continue it to a date certain, so either way we have to re-advertise.
We have a date.
It's April 16th.
April 16th.
Okay. So the motion is to postpone it to April the 16th. And then we have a second. Okay, any more discussion? I call for a vote, Dan Longfellow, aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay, motion carries. Okay. We're going to open-
Yep.
Open the hearing on PA 1901, the Smith's partition. Get back to my paperwork. Tonight, we're holding a public meeting regarding a land partition, PA 1901, with the Smith's land partition. The meeting will proceed as follows. The required disclosure will be read, staff will make a presentation, followed by the applicant, and then anyone else who wishes to address the issue will get an opportunity. Members of the public will have three minutes for each testimony, and then finally there will be rebuttal by the applicant. Now, any members in the audience that want to speak, we need you to sign up and give your name and address in order to testify. And then the commissioners may ask questions of the applicant staff or anyone else. We call the meeting to order. We've got a new member. And now Jake, would you read the disclosure statement, please?
Yes. All persons testifying will be deemed parties of the application and must provide their full name and full mailing address. The city zoning code specifies applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings of fact are in the staff report. Public testimony should be limited to the criteria and findings of fact, or to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes apply to the proposed land use action. Failure to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body or the applicant an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes an appeal to the city council or Land Use Board of Appeals, or to seek damages in circuit court due to a condition of approval. Before the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, a participant may ask for the Planning Commission for an opportunity to present additional relevant evidence or testimony that is within the scope of the hearing. The hearing body shall grant the request by scheduling a date to finish the hearing, a continuance, or a time, or a time and date certain, or by leaving the record open for additional evidence or testimony.
Thank you. Questions for the commission? Does any member of the commission wish to declare a potential act of conflict of interest or bias? Does any member of the commission wish to report any site visits or ex parte contact?
I've driven past it.
Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the juris- jurisdiction of the commission to hear this matter? Also, does any member of the audience wish to challenge the impartiality or ex parte disclosures of any member of the commission?
May I ask clarification? So, I just want the record to reflect, did you get everybody who said they drove by? Let's make sure that-
I have.
Drove by, have you drove by?
Looking on Google Maps doesn't count.
Well, let's just declare that. Yeah, yeah, okay. We'll just make sure, I want to make sure the record's full.
No, I'm asking.
Yes, yes. Okay. Good, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Straight, would you give us your staff report, please?
You bet. Thank you, Chairman, fellow commissioners, Matt Street presenting the agenda item for PA 1901, Smith's partition. The project is located along Alexander Lane, westerly of Old Salem Road. The zoning for the subject site is RR 2.5 urban conversion. The applicant is requesting to partition .9 acres into three residential lots, as shown on the slide here behind me. In order to support the project tonight, the proposal must meet specific criteria, and you've heard them all before, we're going to go through them one at a time. The project must not conflict with the comprehensive plan or any of the state goals in any way. Based on staff's review of this project, it satisfies all of those criteria. The project also must not conflict with any city codes. The lots they're proposing here are under two and a half acres, and therefore they're going to be deemed urban, and they must connect to water and sewer. Flag lots in our code are discouraged, and that's the actual text that's used in our code, they're not allowed. Specifically, the code says that they will only be allowed when other alternative means of access cannot be provided, and if permitted, the minimum access width shall be 25 feet. The applicant has added 25 feet of total width for both of the flag lots going back there, providing an easement on each side to the other to assure that that will remain 25 feet into perpetuity. Now, the access really can't be gained any other way based on staff's review unless the applicant teams up with neighboring properties to assure some other kind of alternative access. The term "cannot" is a little bit subjective, especially when neighboring properties have the ability to further subdivide, as you can see up here tonight. However, because none of those other applicants, or the other property owners are at the table tonight, staff deemed that this could be consistent with the code, and we found that it meets that criteria. As you've seen before, the project has to comply with ORS Chapter 92, which has to do with the subdividing of properties. Most of ORS 92 deals with final plats and everything that's done after this tentative stage, but this project fully conforms with the few pieces that do actually speak to a tentative subdivision, or tentative partition. Because the code also requires us to show that the site itself can further develop if any of the lots are big enough to subdivide again in the future, but in this case, all the lots are smaller than 20,000 square feet, which would allow you to split one of them into two and have two tens, so therefore it's as small as it can get, and this section of the code doesn't necessarily apply. The design of the map must also, must not preclude the development of adjoining properties. I tried putting arrows here on the screen to show that in this case, the neighboring properties all have frontage onto a street, and therefore this proposed partition doesn't preclude the development of any neighboring properties, and the applicant has met this criteria. The project is not proposing any streets of its own, so the criteria that apply to what the internal streets have to be like don't apply to this project. Adequate utilities for this project are available, as you can see here on the screen, it's a little bit hard to see, this comes from Albany's page that shows water and sewer are in the street already for Alexander Lane, and so the proper utilities exist today. The project must not impact any drainage ways. In this case, the actual site, the proposed site, is lower than the street itself. And specifically, our code says that runoff from impervious surfaces must be collected and transported to a natural or public drainage facility with sufficient capacity to accept that discharge. In most cases, most lots tilt and drain to the street, and the street is that accepted drainage. In this case, the lot goes the other way. And so we've added a condition of approval to the project, asking the applicant to show us a study before it records of how they're going to address that drainage. Lastly, the project must not emit any dangerous hazards, since this is going to be eventually a single-family lot. We don't anticipate that the single-family homes will emit anything dangerous or anything that's inconsistent with the other code sections. Now, before I go on, I wanted to correct one small typo in the staff report. It says that we posted the notice here in City Hall today for this project, which is incorrect. We posted it on January 29th, 2019, so just a small correction. But with that, staff recommends approval of PA 1901 with the conditions of approval. This concludes staff's report. Myself and the applicants are available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Anybody want to ask staff any questions?
I have a-
Go ahead.
I have a question about who owns the easement.
The easement is a public easement in favor of each other, and so on Lot 2- Hang on, let me stand up.
Lot 2 owns half of it, and Lot 3 owns half of it.
Right. So this, yeah, Lot 2 will own half of that easement, and Lot 3 will own the other half, but they're deeding over to each other the access rights on that entire 25-foot width.
So 25-foot width, does that include utilities? I mean, I didn't know that, I guess I knew we had a 25-foot, but that, that's utilities and road?
Utilities and access, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head what the drive aisle width is required to be, but-
15.
15?
I think 16.
16? Sounds right.
Any more questions? Okay, would the applicant please come forward? Would you describe your application, please?
Hi, I'm Stephen Smith, I'm a builder, progressive design builder, so I've built other homes in the area. I did something similar to this at 3231 Alexander. There's three homes, a three-home partition there. And I intend, I've already, this, this place had a mobile home in place of where the home is there, so I've already removed the mobile home and, and put a stick-built home in. Also, the barn that's existing had a bunch of kind of hideous lean-to stuff off of it. Yeah, I took all that off, and I'm going to either side or, or, you know, repair the metal that's on the barn to include it in the front, in the front home, so it's kind of melds in, I'll probably side it, I'm still on the fence on that. And then I intend on putting two single-level homes on the two pieces of property in the back, as I did at 3231 Alexander about a year ago.
Are you the owner of the property?
I am.
Yeah, okay. So you're in agreement with all the conditions that-
Yes.
-the commission has put?
Yes.
Hook up to the city?
Hook up to the city, yeah, everything's right at the street, like they said, there's an, there's a, yes, everything. I've done some, I've done some elevation and shot some grades as far as the drainage and stuff goes, and I've, and I've spoke with-
With Janelle about that?
With Janelle about that, and, in fact, I talked to her prior to it, but I went ahead and took some shots, and my, the storm rain actually runs down the shoulder of, just inside the curb, along the edge of the road there, and then it goes down and gets collected and put into the storm, there's an open, there's an open swale, so I'll probably tie into that, but the bottom of that swale is two and a half feet lower than, than the back of this property, so there's, we've got plenty of fall to the front of the property to handle the storm situation. But, but as is said, you guys want a calculation from an engineer, and I'll have a civil put that together.
Was the mobile home connected to city services?
It, it was on city sewer. It was on city sewer, but it had a well, so the well's, I'm just going to leave the well for, I left the well there, I'm going to connect it up for irrigation, and then I'll connect into city, city water, there's city water and meter, there's everything there for the house that's there. I'll have to, I'll have to run utilities back to the back, and there's a telephone pole at the, on the bottom right-hand corner, there's a telephone pole where all the electricity comes, and it has a transformer on it, so, so it's, all that stuff's going to be easily, you know, accessed without having to go anywhere but on the land there, on the property.
Will, will the water from 2 and 3 run across Lot Number 1, or how are you going to get rid of the water for Number 3?
It'll come down the easement. I'll have a utility easement, it'll come, everything will come down, down the road, the edge of the road, I'll have, and I'll probably bury everything, I don't really like open trenches and having to deal with all that, I usually try and get everything underground, it's easier to maintain, you don't, you don't have to, some kind of open swell, you got to take care of weeds and stuff in.
Isn't one of the requirements to disable the wells, or can he keep the well for other uses? He just can't use it on the house?
Correct, yeah, the, there's a well that, you can leave it for irrigation-
For irrigation.
-larger tracks, but lots this size, you probably wouldn't need to leave that for irrigation. I don't know if Janelle would let him leave that.
Be nice to have your own well for your garden.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would. That's a question I have for Janelle, too. Since that the wells and the septic tanks have to be filled in properly if required, where's it written that whether or not it's required with all of these partitions that we're doing that are on septic and wells, and we're telling them they have to connect to city services, and that's all we're saying? What about the if required part there? Is there anybody on septic anymore out here? Is there?
Did you, Janelle, did you have an answer for that, please?
And if you would come up-
Come up here, please.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Steve, we didn't take your time.
No, that's okay.
You can add a question.
I knew it sucked you into this.
So, Janelle Do, City of Millersburg. So, as far as existing wells on properties, they, as long as they're, they meet the setback requirements for wells, you know, as, we don't end up with sanitaries who are lying too close to one or something to serve the, you know, construction, the wells can remain, but they have to meet all the requirements of the cross-connection and backflow prevention program, which are done pretty regularly out here, and the City of Albany runs that program for us, so there just has to be backflow prevention, and wells can continue to be used for irrigation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anything else you'd like to add before we ask for, did you have another question?
Well, I'm going to have a question, but whatever you're ready for.
Go ahead and ask a question.
Okay, I know you're going to be cutting Alexander Lane for utilities.
Yes.
And I'm still not happy with the last project you did on Alexander, and you're still driving on Alexander, boom, boom. The patchwork on that is not acceptable to me.
Okay.
So aren't you committed to make sure, because it'll be patched, and then six months later, it's going to be an inch or two deeper.
Okay, so I-
So I don't know how to prevent that, but I don't like going boom, boom, down the real high street.
Okay. I hired Mid Valley Gravel to do that, and if it's a concern down there, first off, maybe we should all get, contact them and have them address that again.
Yeah, just drive Alexander, you'll just hit right-
Being a contractor, we have a 10-year workmanship guarantee, and I think that would fall under that, repair would fall under that workmanship guarantee.
Yeah, because we do that.
And then I would probably have them do, do the work additionally on this, I mean, coming across the road and do the tap and stuff, because it's beyond my pay grade.
Because I doubt they rarely patch once and they stay perfectly.
Yeah.
It doesn't take long.
I know they compacted and stuff, but like you said, yeah.
Because that's a nice result.
So, more recently, the city has adopted additional pavement patching requirements, I'll make sure you're aware of that, we'll get you those. Water services, though, are installed by City of Albany, and the pavement patching is done through the city and then charged to the contractor. So again, we have adopted new pavement patching standards, which will be in place prior to this project that weren't in place for the other one, but the water services are not actually installed by the contractor.
Oh, okay.
Including the patching.
Thank you. Now, do you have any other comments to make before we ask for public testimony? Okay.
See if there's anybody, has anybody more questions to the endless.
Anybody else, questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, sir. Now the public can speak. Anyone like to speak in favor first? Anybody want to speak in opposition? Would you? Got a rebuttal?
Has there been any, received any written documents and need to be included or notified into the record?
No, if staff ever does receive documents like that, what we'll do is we'll put together a memo just to make sure it's in the record, and we'll hand that out, and so I have no memo for the Planning Commission today. We haven't received any additional information on this project.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions of staff regarding this application? Okay, seeing none, we're going to close this portion of the hearing. And now we deliberate among ourselves. Discussion?
Sure. My only point was in regards to the driveway being on the street, I understand that Alexander is a through street, and that's why we're going to allow something like this with a three-home strip, okay?
See, it's nothing-
I know it's part of our new city code, right? We're actually not, you know, we, the last set of homes we approved, we asked them to put the driveway on the street, but that was on a smaller sub-street, not a through street like Alexander.
Are you talking about partial law?
Yeah, for law law, yes.
But then that would have two driveways real close together, and I would think that would be what we would want.
Just saying that that's what we did over here on these homes, so, just bringing it up as a point, you know, as long as we all understand that, you know.
Yeah, I've done these, that makes the driveway for the house, the front house on Alexander.
Yep.
You have to come off Alexander.
That was my only point.
Well, it wasn't one of the things we wanted, was to eliminate driveways.
On through streets, yeah, on the major, yeah. It's in the new code, we've dealt with it, I'm just saying that, you know, we just want to do physical, that's all.
Well, the 12 and a half foot wide front end is something that we've had a real issue with also. Both of the back two lots front of Alexander are only 12 and a half feet wide, and they have to do that in order for the lots to be big enough to meet the 10,000 square feet. So that's, we've got 3,500 square, 3,500 square feet of land, just that driveway.
Other comments? Go ahead.
Matt, those in the writings from the fire department that had to have a turnaround, and it showed diagrams of the different turnarounds for dead-end type things?
The letter we get from fire is a boilerplate letter, and at the end of each one of their sections, they say when that on and applies, and in this case, they said that the fire turnaround wasn't needed because it's only three, three lots.
Oh, they can reach from the house?
The hose pole is long enough, right?
Oh, well, 360 feet, huh? Just checking.
I mean, in the end, we've required him to get clearance from fire anyhow before he does the final plat, so he'll have to make them happy.
Well, there was signage on there too, recording, right? You keep the park and block and fire.
I don't recall that specifically, but at any rate, we've just added a condition of approval saying that he has to get clearance from fire, that he has met all of the conditions that fire put forward, and so he'll eventually get a clearance letter or an email from fire and give that to us, saying that all of their concerns have been addressed.
Yeah, one of the conditions said that he has, fire wants to see where those signs are going before they sign off on it. Obviously-
Obviously, there's just a blank diagram, so we don't have actual plans.
Yeah, the final plat will look very different.
Yeah.
Any comments?
Yeah.
Well, if there's no more comments, I'll call for a motion.
Well, then I will move that we approve PA 19-01, Smithland Partition, with the attached conditions.
I have a motion.
Second.
And I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to thank everybody here tonight for this hearing. If you'd like to appeal this, you have 15 days to appeal to the city council. Okay, thank you.
So now we're going to this one, 1903.
Okay, tonight we're gonna hear a public hearing on item PA 1903, which is up here, which is Will's petition. We get to read the same thing over again. This meeting will proceed as follows. The required disclosure will be read, staff will make a presentation, followed by the applicant. And then anyone who wishes to address the issue will have the opportunity. Members of the public will have three minutes each for testimony. Finally, there will be time for rebuttal by the applicant. Like I said before, if anyone wants to testify, please sign in. Now we call this public hearing to order. Jake, would you please read the disclosure statement?
Yes. All persons testifying will be deemed parties of the application and must provide their full name and full mailing address. The city zoning code specifies applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings of fact are in the city staff report. Public testimony should be limited to the criteria and findings of fact, or to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes apply to the proposed land use action. Failure to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body or the applicant an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes appeal to the city council or land use board of appeals, or to seek damages in circuit court due to a condition of approval. Before the conclusion of this, of the initial evidentiary hearing, the applicant may ask the planning commission for an opportunity to present additional relevant evidence or testimonies that is within the scope of the hearing. The hearing's body shall grant the request by scheduling a date to finish the hearing, a continuance, or a time and date certain, or by leaving the record open for additional evidence or testimony.
Thank you. Do any members of the commission wish to declare potential or actual conflict of interest or bias?
I've known Steve and Heidi for 20 years, probably.
Same here. I know anything about these plans or anything like that, no conversations with them about this.
Okay.
Yeah, the engineer is part of a group I'm in.
Okay.
The engineer for this project.
All right.
Second thing, but-
That's okay.
Okay.
As long as he's declared it, we're fine.
Okay. Does any member of the commission wish to report any site visits or ex parte contact? I assume you've made visits.
Been by, was by everywhere.
By their.
Yeah, okay. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the commission to hear this matter? Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the impartiality or ex parte disclosures of any member of the commission? Hearing none, Mr. Straight, would you give us a staff report, please?
You bet. Thank you, Chair. Fellow commissioners, Matt Street presenting this item for staff tonight. Before I get started, I wanted to pass out a memo. We're proposing a few extra conditions of approval to be added to this, and we'll talk about this near the end. I'm gonna hand these to Jake, who's gonna pass them around. Thanks, Jake. This project is located along Millersburg Drive, south of Parker Lane.
Thank you, Jake.
You've seen this previously for the Yootsie partition, where they carved off the parcel up there in the corner. That partition was done last calendar year, and so this doesn't qualify as a serial partition because you're allowed to do one each calendar year, and so he's passed that test. The zoning on the site is RR10 urban conversion. The project is proposing to partition 4.93 acres into three residential parcels, one of which is larger, as you can see here on the slide behind you. Now, in order to support the project tonight, it must meet all of the criteria from our code, so we'll go through those one at a time. The project must not conflict with the comprehensive plan or the state goals. Based on staff's review, we've taken a look at that, we think this project doesn't conflict with the comprehensive plan or the state goals in any way. Also, the project cannot conflict with any of the city codes. The lots that you see here are less than the zone permits for rural standards, and so they are urban, and the urban standards apply. The applicant must connect the homes, then, to existing water and sewer in the street there in Millersburg. Conditions of approval have been added to that effect as well. Now, as a quick note, similar to another partition we saw just last time, it will leave a structure that you see here circled on the slide behind me, it's gonna be a barn all by itself on one of the proposed parcels. That's okay, it's just going to then, from that point forward, be a legal non-conforming structure, because it's a necessary structure with no primary use. But once a home is built on there, it's gonna be just fine. So in the meantime, it just lives on as a legal non-conforming structure. But that's okay. The project must also conform with ORS Chapter 92, like we talked about before, that mainly pertains to final plats, but the small section that does pertain to tentative maps, this project does meet those requirements. The design of the map must also allow for the future development of any parcel that's large enough to further divide in the future. As you can see on this slide behind me here, there are two lots on here that are under the 20,000 square foot threshold for that, because they can't divide again, but the one lot towards the rear certainly can. It's gonna be large enough to further divide in the future. Now, that larger lot features significant floodplain, but because floodplains can change, and because the area that is outside the floodplain is also large enough to be divided, the applicant's engineer designed this project in a way where it's going to have the flag, if you will, that comes down the center, is wide enough to actually become a street in the future. And so this has accommodated the further subdivision of that lower parcel by allowing a street width in the event that it divides further in the future. So by doing that, we feel they absolutely meet the criteria required for future development of that area. You can see here in this blow-up version, how the throat that comes down there is 52 feet wide, which meets our minimum street requirement section, so-
Well, that's why they did that.
It should be able to meet that criteria. The design of the map also has to not preclude any neighbors from getting access in the future, should they subdivide. As you can see here on the slide, the neighbors all have access directly to the street, and so they're not precluding that in any way. The applicant is not proposing any streets internal to the project, except, of course, the one part where they're proposing it to be wide enough for a street in the future someday, but they're not proposing a street right now. So the section of the criteria that apply to the design of the streets inside the project don't apply. The project must also assure that utilities exist. Proper utilities already exist in Millersburg Drive, as shown on the slide. The project design also must not impact any drainage ways. Now, in this project, that's a very high bar, because so much of this project is in the floodplain. So I've kind of drawn it out here in a way that makes it a little bit more obvious to see, that parcel three, while it does feature significant floodplain and drainage ways, there is a significant portion of that area outside of that where they could build a single-family home in the future. We've added a condition of approval to the project that requires a delineation before any construction on that lot occurs, just so we can assure that whatever house is built there is outside the wetlands and floodplain area. Last but not least, the project also has to assure that it doesn't emit any kind of hazards, and like we talked about before, technically, this is just a map, it's not proposing any construction, but eventually, there will be single-family homes there, and we don't anticipate that those single-family homes will emit any dangerous hazards. So they meet that criteria as well. Beyond meeting the criteria, the applicant also must meet standards from the code, and there were a few that applied specifically to this project. As we discussed, the wetlands and the floodplain area, we added a condition of approval that requires that to be delineated before construction on parcel three. And of course, the water and sewer connections we talked about for the existing home, those will have to happen before the map records. So before I go into that, we did pass out a memo. Based on my error, not my engineer's error, I got her letter late, and so I didn't get a chance to incorporate her conditions of approval into the staff report that you got. And so, on the memo you have here on the back, it's her full letter that she gave to me with the conditions of approval. Most of these were already included in your staff report, but there were three that were newer, and so by virtue of handing this memo out tonight, I'm proposing that we add these three conditions of approval to the staff report and make that part of your motion. So with that, staff recommends approval of PA 1903, the Will's partition, and myself and the applicants are available if you have any questions.
Number four on the back says, city and sewer are available in Alexander Lane. Wouldn't that be Millersburg Drive?
Oh, geez, sorry.
That's kind of a long run.
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
Okay.
That's actually a duplicate of a condition of approval that's in the actual staff report, and I think that one of the staff reports is correct.
You just talked about, you have Alexander.
Oh, sure. I think that's a typo in Janelle's letter, that's all. Yeah. But the actual condition of approval that it's duplicating in the staff report is correct.
Any questions of staff?
I have one. On section 5.128, sanitary sewers, the proposed condition of approval says parcels one and three must connect. Wouldn't that be all of them?
It says that just because, well, it would be all of them for certain. I think I did that because parcel two didn't have a structure on it yet, and so naturally, as part of its building permits, it's going to have to connect to water and sewer. But the same is true for three, I'm not quite sure why I separated those out that way. But yes, to speak to your statement, yeah, that's correct. All three will have to connect to water and sewer. The condition is really only requiring parcel two, the home on parcel two, to connect to water and sewer before it records.
That's not what the condition of approval says. It doesn't even talk about parcel two. I'm on page six, at the bottom, on 5.128.
Another question I have, Matt, is number nine on the back page of the hand.
Well, that's why it says one and three, because one and three are vacant. So that condition is simply saying that whenever those two build, they'll have to connect. So that condition's correct.
Okay.
I think there's a separate condition that talks about parcel three, or rather-
Two, parcel two.
Parcel two, that's correct.
Because this says, on one and three says when it's built.
In condition number five, on page nine, does say that prior to the approval of the final plat, the applicant shall connect the existing home shown on parcel two of the proposed partition to city water and sewer. So the condition's in there.
Okay.
Then we just talked about the wells. Number nine says, if required, any existing wells, septic tanks, and underground storage tanks shall be abandoned in accordance.
And that's why I brought it up. Is this property on a septic system?
It's on well and septic.
Yes.
Okay, so is it going to be abandoned?
The well will not be abandoned, but the septic will be.
Yeah, I'd like to move well for irrigation.
I think we leave it that way as a boilerplate for all of our staff reports, because then it leaves Janelle some flexibility, because say somebody's well was already too close to a neighboring septic system, then Janelle might want that well to be shut down because it's violating other codes. And so we leave it flexible on purpose and word it that way.
I got a question on the streets. Now, that's 52 feet wide through one and two there, are they gonna be required to build that out to city standards, as far as the street?
Well, not this project, because this project isn't proposing to build that street out, but should the future owner of parcel number three come in and decide they want to subdivide that, they might even work with the FEMA to get more land in there out of the floodplain, in which case they could put in more units. So whoever owns that in the future, if they want to subdivide it, they'll have to put that street in, depending on how many units they bring in.
Is that one of the requirements?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have a question on that map, maybe it's not for you, maybe it's for the engineer. But right in the center of it, it says that 52-foot access easement is benefiting parcel three. Parcel three's up in the front. How is that benefiting?
Oh, because, like we saw on the previous map, whenever parcel, whenever parcel three comes in to build, we want them to take access to this share of easement to come out this way and limit the curb cuts on the street. That's why we did that.
So there's already a curb cut on, what, number one?
Ooh, I'm not sure about that. We'd have to ask the applicants that one.
Well, it's showing two on the map.
They have two curb cuts.
Yeah, it looks like there's a pull-through.
So two and three are, yeah, curb cuts.
So that 52-foot easement is part of three for right now?
Yes.
Okay, I misread that, I thought that was part of one.
It's part of one. Three benefits, right.
Okay. Okay, okay.
We don't have the numbers.
That's okay. Yeah, I've been confused with them a bit, too.
Why don't we let the applicants come up here and present their presentation?
I have one more question.
Sure.
What's the buildable area on parcel one? I have that calculation. I know it's 4.18.
No, I don't, we'd have to ask the engineer. I don't know, they didn't provide that calculation to me. I could see clearly there was more than enough to put a single-family home on, but I don't know the exact number. The engineer might know. Do you know what the buildable area is?
The area of what?
The buildable area?
On three?
On parcel one, the big one?
No, I don't know. It is over 20,000, though.
You'd have to have the state come in and tell you where that floodplain actually is.
We, you'd have to, and that's why we've conditioned for delineation, so we aren't accidentally putting a house into wetlands or anything else, yeah.
Kyle Lottmer, Dell Engineering.
Yeah, Steve Will's, property owner.
Okay, go ahead.
So I have no objections, and I believe the applicant has no objections to the staff report as read, but if there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer them here.
Did you guys get a copy of the memo?
I did.
Oh, you got one, okay.
Any questions?
I guess mine's for Matt still. So if somebody comes in to build out three right now, they can put in a 16-foot wide driveway and a 52-foot easement for right now, right?
Correct. Correct, yeah. That's the idea, to prevent another curb cut onto Millersburg.
Right, and they can put in a minimal driveway.
Mm-hmm. That's correct. That's totally correct. Yeah, they don't have to build it out to 52 feet, that's correct.
Whoever builds out lot one is gonna be, possibly have to build that to a city street. If they're gonna put one house there, they would.
No, exactly right. If it's just one house, they just have to build a driveway, and that goes back to it. But in the event that they subdivide that in the future, and we have to be careful there, too, because they could partition that, and they might not need to build the full street, but if they subdivide it, more than four lots, they'd have to build the full street back there. And so it's drawn to that width, to assure that can happen. And credit to the applicant, they met with us a long time ago, talking about that very issue, and they wanted to be sure they met that criteria, which is why they made that 52 feet wide, to the detriment of the other two lots, but we were very thrilled to see it there, because it made it really easy to make sure we satisfied that criteria to further subdivide in the future.
Also note that the 52 feet lines up with Parker, I believe it is.
Thank you, yeah, that's true.
Yes.
Yeah.
Nicely done, by the way.
I don't show it on the map, but it does.
So I have a question on parcel two. Right now, is taking access off of Millersburg Drive, so that means that those two driveways are gonna be really close together, right? They're not close together.
Well, they exist today.
They're both already in there.
Okay, so what's our requirement, 50 feet between?
It's not, yeah.
So like, where I'm going with this-
The next door neighbor's 50, 50 feet from it.
What we're going with this is, should we, should we not maybe take access off of that 52-foot strip? And try to get rid of some of the driveways on Millersburg Drive? I don't know. I'm just asking a question.
We talked about-
It would certainly be ideal, but I don't know that-
I don't know if it's doable either, okay? I'm just asking a question.
Separated by 55 feet.
55 feet.
Yeah, we, Janelle and I talked about that, too, whether or not we could have parcel Yeah, we, Janelle and I talked about that, too, whether or not we could have parcel number two go sideways and connect to the easement. That way, there's only one curb cut for all three lots in the future. But we felt that rose to the level of reasonability, because right now, it might not be reasonable to have parcel two spin around and connect that way, because we're not sure the way their garage is positioned, if that's even possible. And short of moving the house, which is a bit much to ask, we thought it was probably reasonable to make sure that we had it for at least the other parcel.
I'm not asking that, I was just wondering if that was a possibility, to get rid of some of those driveways.
Kyle looked at that, I think. We talked about it with him.
Did you?
And I do think that you guys do have a minimum separation between at least new driveways. I think it is 50 feet.
I thought it was 50. Yeah. Okay.
That house has been there for 40, 40 years.
Forty-plus years.
Forty-plus years. So I don't know that we'd want to inconvenience a driveway that's been there for 40 years over this deal.
But we didn't want to create a new one.
No.
With the addition of the extra parcel. Exactly right, which is why we're having them connect to the middle point and made everything work out.
Thank you. Is anyone? Go ahead. You can, you can be seated, please. Anyone in the audience want to speak on this matter? Anyone in favor, please come up.
Don Miller, 2720 Millersburg Drive. We live right next door to Heidi and Steve, and they moved in in April, and in the last nine months or so, they took a house that was in dire need of help, and a piece of property that was even in dire need of help, and turned it into quite a piece that we're very proud to live next door to. And I'm sure they'll do the same with whatever they're developing here. And we're very happy to have them in the neighborhood.
Does anyone wish to speak in opposition? Do you have any further comments you'd like to make? Okay. Okay. We close this portion of it, and any further questions to staff?
I have one. It looks like on this map, which is a little bit more closer up, there's a garden shed that's right in that 52-foot. Is that gonna get either removed or taken out?
That's not the area.
Oh, it's not? It's still on the mount? Okay.
Anyone comment, questions? Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing, and now it's our turn. Any comments, suggestions? Well, if not, then I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve PA 1903 Will's Land Partition along with the conditions of approval.
I need a second.
I'll start again, ma'am.
We have a second. We have a motion and a second.
I wanted to make, just to clarify, when you say the conditions of approval, you're also including the three conditions of approval on the memo dated February 19, 2019. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And that's what the second was to.
Assistant.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
Any more comments? Okay, we'll call for a vote, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We'd like to thank all of you who testified tonight. If there is a motion for, if anyone'd like to appeal, they have 15 days to appeal to staff. Before we adjourn, let's see if staff has any comments they want to make.
I did, I had some information for you. We had city council initiate a zone text change to remove manufactured home parks from the two rural zones, rural residential 2.5 and 10, and that is moving forward on March 11th to a hearing where we're gonna have everybody there, planning commission and city council. Now, that all happened after our last planning commission meeting, so I kind of wanted to see if anybody had any questions about how that was gonna go, if I could provide any information to you on that. We're working on the staff report now, but if not, we'll see you all on the 11th, but I wanted to be sure there were no questions. Lot of people are confusing that one with an application, and it's very different that we got. Different things.
The question is, what's triggered this?
You guys!
Well, no, we haven't, we haven't gone into the code, but if something has triggered it, do you want to?
Well, let me change gears and talk about something else, then. Just to inform you, there has been a very politically charged application that has been submitted for what's called the Evening Star Manufactured Home Park. We are currently reviewing that application for completeness. There is no hearing date scheduled for it yet, but I certainly wanted to make you all aware of the fact that application has come in.
That's what I was wondering. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Was that located on Sedona Road towards that area?
Correct. Right, right, almost on the corner of Sedona and Millersburg, but over a little bit there, yeah. Behind those homes that were just recently built.
4.4 years.
That's right. That's right, exactly right. Yep. And beyond that, I wanted to mention that we don't have a actual planning commission hearing in March at this point. The next one will be April, but we have workshops, and I think Jake wanted to talk to you about that before we concluded and let you go.
So yes, we have, I sent out a couple emails last week. I just wanted to clarify, since we had the majority of folks here. Our upcoming meetings are as follows. We have Monday, March 18th, and that's a planning commission workshop, okay? And that's gonna be with John Sullivan. And, sorry, John Morgan, thank you.
You can go, too, John. You can go, too.
We, we still have our February 25th meeting, and that's gonna be going over the map. That's with John Morgan. You're gonna be here for that one, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and Matt's gonna be here. We won't be going over any portion of the, of the new proposed code at that time. March 18th, that's a Monday. We had Tuesday, March 19th, and like Matt just said, that's been canceled. We don't have any applications that'll be going for that day. No.
So we're going for March 19th?
Eight, right. Eighteenth.
Nothing on the 19th?
At what time?
Just a workshop on the 18th.
Six o'clock. All these are the standard.
The workshop's the 18th.
Correct.
Yeah, we'll be meeting Monday for the workshop. The Tuesday hearing is no longer, isn't going to happen, so.
And our joint meeting on the 11th is at 6:30? Six o'clock?
6:00. 6:00 P.M.
I believe it's 6:00 P.M. Yes. Oh, you have the.
The council doesn't get up there early.
March 11th.
I'll be sending out a reminder email before that one.
Thank you, I won't be late again.
Okay.
So we got March and February.
March 11th. At 6:00 P.M.
February 25th, March 18th. Both workshops.
We got 11th and 18th.
Now, I need to know which dates of these work better for another workshop. This is the final draft of the code, or the next draft of the code. We have either March 25th, 26th, or 28th. I've heard back from about three. You're gone. I know that's the week of spring break, so.
Yeah.
If it doesn't work, if we can't get the majority of folks here, we can push it off to April, but if we can get.
Couldn't we go on a regular meeting night, since we don't have a meeting?
These are the dates that John were, was available. So he wasn't available on the 19th.
26, 27, 28, 29.
If we're determined that tonight, you gotta wait.
I guess we can wait, but I sent out an email to everyone. I've only heard back from about three folks, so.
Yeah.
You're fine with them? Okay. I'll discuss it with John and see if, I'll tell him who's not available and see if he wants to push that off.
Maybe a time after first or second weekend in April or so.
That sounds like it's gonna be.
You're gone.
I'm back April 3rd.
Yeah, yeah, so maybe after.
I'll ask John what his availability is the first couple weeks of April, then I'll shoot you guys that.
Yeah, after, Thursday's like the fifth or so of April. I just would like to encourage everybody to do their best to attend, so we need it warm on the March 11th hearing.